All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Lake Mills City Council meeting for November 2nd, 2021. A special note here before we get started. You don't see any city staff with us tonight. There is a COVID sweeping through the office and the community, basically. So, anyone that wants to wear their mask, fair warning, I guess. So, most of the city staff will be joining us virtually tonight. So, we'll be hearing them over the intercom and over the speakers. So, hopefully, the speakers will work well enough for everybody in the gallery. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. All right, the next section, approval of City Council minutes of October 18th, October 19th, and October 25th. Some of these would be work sessions. The 19th was a City Council meeting. Is there any questions or revisions to any of those minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 19th and the budget work sessions from October 18th and 25th. Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Kurler, second by Ms. Quidnow. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie's 5-0. All right, next on the agenda is correspondence. We have eight people signed up to speak tonight. I'll go over the... I'll go over this statement. And with the eight people, I want to make sure that we adhere to the three-minute rule after I read this, because it's going to extend the meeting. And please, please bring relevant material. Don't be repeating the same thing over and over. Use your time wisely. And let me read the comments associated with that. Yes?
Did we have any things for correspondence?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping over things. Correspondence. So, in correspondence, and then we'll get to the questions and public comment. Mrs. Bishop, any correspondence for this week?
I was double-checking my email just for any last-minute communication, but no, I have none. Thank you.
Just Quidnow?
None at this time.
All right. I did have one as I was walking up the steps. I was trying to remember. Don't forget to talk about that. And I can't pull it up right now, so I'm going to pass and come back. Mr. Fields?
I think the two emails I had, one was after our last meeting, was about the Lake Mills Chamber and Main Street Program merger, just informational. And then I also did receive one from a constituent on short-term rental, what the regulations were from the city on that. So, I directed them to Dan, so he said he would fill them in.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kurler?
Mr. Waters, I just received one contact, which might be the same that you did, which was regarding a vacancy for the Joint Rock Lake Committee.
That was the one I was thinking of. And also, I did attend the meeting with the merger for the Main Street Program and the City Chamber. So, all right. Now, we'll get into the questions and public comment. So, there is a public hearing tonight. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until that hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you are registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. State's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and filling out the sign-in sheet provided. All right. So, we're open. I can grab the sheet and call people up if you want. Let me do that real quick. All right, we'll start with Alex.
My name is... Hi, my name is Alex Engler, and I'm a part of the Fly Homeschool Group. Please sanction us as a Class B user. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Joy?
Hi, my name is Joy Braun. I live at 149 East Grant Street. Steve Fields, nice to meet you. I live in your ward, so nice to meet you in person. I would just... I'm part of the Fly community. We'd like to be considered as a Class B user, so I'd ask that you guys appeal the decision that was made. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening. My name is Dan Heine, and this is my wife, Kristin, my three boys, Sebastian, Oliver, and the one behind the podium, Simon. We live at 351 Brewster Drive. Steve, you're also... You represent our ward. We are here tonight to ask the City Council to uphold their policy and grant the Fly Homeschool Group as Class B users. Per your own policy, our group qualifies as Class B users because over 50% of our members of this group reside in Lake Mills. We are appealing the City Council to sanction this group as a Class B user, so we have access to this community center. I am asking for you to uphold your own policy, as it is currently written, and approve our application. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Looks like Jeremy and Christine.
Good evening. I am Jeremy Martinson. This is my wife, Christine, Matthew, and Caleb. Matthew's 12, Caleb just turned four. We... Our address is N-5566 Harvey Road, and that's actually Jefferson, Wisconsin. Although our address is now technically Jefferson, we've been residents of Lake Mills for several years. We lived on Meadow Ridge Circle, Stonefield Drive, Rosewood Avenue. We are active members in the Fly community, and we would greatly appreciate the ability to use this space. We think it would really, really help our children of our family and the Fly family with their education. And we just appreciate your time, and I want to thank you guys in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Charlie.
Hello. My name is Charles Engler. I live at 207 Crestview Lane in Lake Mills. This is my family, my wife Nikki, Lucy, Alex, Samantha, Joseph, and William. I'm here to address my City Council, not only as a group, but each individual in this council, whether you have been elected or appointed to your current seated positions. My purpose as one of the many instructors in our Fly community group is to provide meaningful instruction and education to some of the youngest members of our community. In addition to the very basic curriculum of reading, math, science, political science, et cetera, we will be implementing community dates where these kids, some of the things they will be learning about will be civil rights, criminal justice, community first aid and CPR, and public service. Fly Educational Group is mostly composed of Jefferson County residents, with the majority living in the city of Lake Mills. As per current city policy, we meet all the requirements as a Class B user, and I encourage each and every one of you to approve our application to utilize our community center. We are the citizens who live and support your community, and we are the people that you represent. I thank each and every one of you for your time tonight and your thoughtful consideration to approve Fly as a Class B user. Thank you all.
Thank you. Chris is next.
Hi, my name is Chris Poppy. I don't have any young kids, but I did homeschool my kids when... As they were growing up, and it was a wonderful experience. We did a lot of community service. We had classes. We did a lot of educational classes together. We had choir. It was a wonderful experience for them growing up, and I would really love to see this group grow and flourish and have a space that they can call home for their classes and just really learn and grow together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Chris? Did you mention where you live?
149 East Washington Street. Sorry.
All right, Valerie, you're next.
My name is Valerie, and this is my son Sebastian and my daughter Kylie, and we live at 413 College Street in Lake Mills. We're in Ward 3, I believe, so Greg Waters is our representative, so nice to meet you. We are part of the Fly Homeschool Community as well, and we are enjoying it. We would greatly appreciate to be approved as a Class B user, so that we can use the community area to continue our homeschool education. Thank you.
Thank you. And last on the list is Lucy.
Hi, my name is Lucy Engler, and I live in Lake Mills, and I'm a part of the Fly Homeschool Community, and I'm just asking that we are sanctioned as a Class B user or resident.
Class B. Thank you. All right, so that wraps up our public comment section. Move on to City Manager's Report. And Steve, you're virtual. Do you have... There's no documentation, but do you have anything to report today?
No, I don't.
That makes it easy. All right, moving on to Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Police and Fire Commission of August 15th, 2021, Planning Commission of August 31st, 2021, and Library Board of September 20th, 2021. Any Board member reports? Any questions or comments on any of the minutes? All right, seeing none, I'll accept those minutes into our report. Okay, now we enter City Council business. We're going to start the night off with Susan Schreer making a presentation on beach safety from the Joint Rock Lake Committee. Susan?
Okay. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I'd like to make sure that you feel free to ask questions as we go. It's in relationship to the memo that the Joint Rock Lake Committee gave you back in September, or we submitted it in September. So, please feel free to ask any questions as we go rather than waiting to the end. I try to put together a presentation just to kind of group our recommendations in a logical way. I think a very valid question is to kind of ask why I'm here. Why are we doing this? And that's because I don't think that the Joint Rock Lake Committee understood or understands the difference between informal agreement or support and formal agreement and support. And that held true also for the Jefferson County Land, Water, and Conservation Department. So, to give you some background in history, back in 2016, driven by city residents, the Jefferson County Land and Water, I just wanted to grab some notes, and the Rock Lake and the Joint Rock Lake Group, as well as the people out of Watertown, the Environmental Public Health Consortium, met with the town and the city to come up with a consistent beach testing protocol across all beaches. It took a while and considerable conversation. Something was put in place, and then there was also an educational PDF that was called Beach Advisories Closures and Human Health PDF. And we went on. This year, the DNR changed the link on where beach closures are listed. So, the Jefferson County Land, Water Conservation Department updated that link, gave it to the town and said, you know, "Update your website." And they're like, "We have a new town clerk, and we have a new town chair." We were told, "We've never agreed to this." It was never formally agreed to. Then we heard from the city manager that the city never formally agreed to this either. So, what we'd like to do is to be able to have at least one agreement in place between both municipalities to say, "Yes, we all agreed at some point in time this year, 2021, that this is what the testing procedure looks like." And then, since we're bringing it up again, we thought it might well make some additional recommendations to see now in 2021 if you would prefer to do this versus what you had decided to do in 2016. So, does that make sense? Okay. All right. So, on the protocol, and that's written out in...
We jumped.
Great detail in your brochure. I don't really think we need to do that. I guess there's a good delay here. Sorry. We don't need to go through that unless you have a specific question. But one area that we would very much like to see a change is within the protocol that you continue to use the EPA and the Wisconsin DNR guidelines, that whenever a beach is closed, that you go back to the E. coli testing conducted by the state lab of hygiene rather than using in-house testing of the fecal coliform. And we could go back, and I could ask the question that you had, Lisa, to the state lab. I just know that the conversations that I had with the Environmental Public Health Consortium and the people from state lab was very adamant that the E. coli testing is the one that is the most effective to... For public health and safety, this is the one that should be used. If you use that test to close a beach, you should use that test to lift the beach. So, and right now, what happens is if the dates are a little wonky, but let's say on Wednesday, we go ahead and we test a beach, you'll know by Thursday, let's say it gets closed, that the levels are too high. Then what happens currently is if you were a town beach, that beach remains closed for a week. And then, the Environmental Public Health Consortium goes back the next week-ish, and they retest, and they go to the state lab, and the state lab says, "Oh, it's lifted," or it's not. So, basically, that's how they do it, and they feel like they're such a small group, and they only have one beach, they're perfectly comfortable with letting it sit for a week. In the city, it's not done that way. You use an in-house test, the fecal coliform, which was the original test used back in 2016, and then you retest it repeatedly, doing it in-house until it lifts or until the week rolls around again, and then the state lab tests for E. coli. So, go ahead.
So, if I could, I talked to you and Eric before the meeting, so I just wanted the rest of the council and the public to know what we talked about. I mentioned that I'm aware that the fecal coliform test would include E. coli and other coliform bacteria, and so I was wondering if the fecal coliform test result, the follow-up that the city currently does, comes back negative, that should be sufficient to lift. I know it's not the same as an E. coli test, but it seems like if it came back negative, it should be sufficient to lift the closure, beach closure, and if it comes back positive, then maybe something further would be warranted. And so, that's what I had suggested with you, Susan, and it sounded like you were maybe going to follow up on that.
I will follow up on that, because, for example, this is not my wheelhouse, okay? I don't necessarily know if you do the fecal coliform test, and maybe, Eric, you could say, you know, "Do you come back with a estimated level of X?" Or is it a yes/no, there or not? If it's a black and white, there or not, you know, I definitely see where you're coming from, Lisa. But if it's like some certain level, as in E. coli, then maybe there is some debate on that. So, I will take that as an action item, because honestly, I'm not clear on it.
And because we can't do it in-house, it saves a little bit of time. You know, wastewater treatment plant staff are, you know, do that routinely. They're familiar with it, and we might be able to do it more quickly and actually reopen the beach. But again, we need to know, you know, what's acceptable protocol, I guess.
Yes, and the other thing, though, that's important for you to keep in mind, that when you're taking a look at redoing that test, you're going to have state... You're going to have city staff to pull water, whether you do the fecal test or whether you do the E. coli test. So, you have that person. What you have is the DNR pays for your test on the E. coli, so there's no expense to the city. The issue is the transportation of that sample. So, you could have a state... Yeah, a city person do it. You could have a group of volunteers, maybe run that into Madison instead of going back and taking, you know, an in-house test. But anyways, we can... I will look at that and get back to you. And but that will be one of the decisions, I think, that the council could take a peek at. The other recommendation that we would really like you to consider, and we consider it critical, is that currently, the city does not close... They do not post for advisories. Okay? So, if the test comes back at an elevated level, which would be called an advisory, whatever that number is, the city has decided not to post for that, then if it comes back at closure level, which is higher yet, then the city does go ahead and close for that. And so, what we would like to see is the same recommendation that the EPA has and the Wisconsin DNR, that you let people know when you've reached that advisory level. Okay? In the past, what we have heard from conversations with the city was that you didn't want to test, you didn't want to put up the advisory postage, that there's signs at the beaches saying, "Swim at your own risk." My comment to that was, the first sentence says, "No lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk." And I don't think that any family member here going to Sandy Beach would read that sign and say, "Oh, that must mean water quality, swim at your own risk." So, that's not necessarily true. I also saw some documentation that there was going to be signage on the beaches which read, "Potential E. coli to be present in Rock Lake," unquote. I've never seen that posted. I did take my bike around and look at the various beaches. I didn't see that. But then, even that, as a mother, would not get me too excited, because the potential for E. coli to be present is not the same as knowing that there's an advisory level at a particular beach. And then, just to give you an idea of how much are we talking about, you'll see that in the memo, but last... In the last five years, at Bartles Beach, that beach was only closed once in the last five years, and there was no advisories. Okay? Tyrenina, there was three advisories in the last five years. Sandy Beach East, it was closed twice. This is where we have trouble, Sandy Beach West. In the last five years, it's been closed 10 times, and it would have had an advisory level four times. So, that is the beach to give it some idea. It's also important to note that the town does post for advisories. Yeah.
So, I have a question about the language that the advisory post would say. Does the EPA or DNR have suggestions for the advisory language that you actually put up on the beach? And then, I do understand that we are saying the beach is closed, and that is going up at the beach, so that's not the issue. It's the advisory.
Yep, there's actually signs, and the Environmental Public Health Consortium, which is really out of Watertown, it's a combination of groups, but they have established signs that they use, and that was one of the recommendations. You know, you could just use the same signs as everyone else, so that people could start to... If they go to Ferry Park Beach on the town side, or they go to Bartles, it's the same sign.
What does that sign say? Do you happen to know?
No, I don't, but I can get you a copy of it.
Sure, I'm curious as to what it is that everybody else is using that says to people this is an advisory, that there are certain levels of something in the water. Thank you.
I'll write that down.
I have a follow-up question. With regard to the amount of time it takes to get the test results back, my concern as a parent is thinking about... I don't know when it's being tested. I don't know when there's going to be a test being done. That's not obviously something that's going to be posted. If I decide to take my daughters to the beach, let's say, and unbeknownst to me, there's been a test for E. coli, but we don't get notification of that until five days later, because that's how long it takes for the test to resume.
Excellent question. So, I am impressed with the level of urgency that exists in this whole area between the state lab and their ability to contact Holly Heinzel, who is the person who's from the Environmental Public Health Consortium, and then Holly's contact of the town and the city, and how fast the city responds. So, it's not long delays at all. I mean, no one's going to stand up and say, "Within 24 hours." But I mean, Holly was like, "Well, eight hours. I'll say eight hours." I'm like, "But it's okay. We know that you'll try to do it as quick as possible." And the other thing is that the original testing is always done so that the data is in before the weekend. But it doesn't, like you say, you could be going on that magical Wednesday, right? So, there is inherently some risk in swimming in water or even going to a public pool, right? Because not all public pools are tested all the time, or the private pools that are out there. So, yes.
And just one more. Thank you for hearing me. How long does it take for E. coli to dissipate from the environment to a point where it's no longer a risk?
Yeah, that's a really good question, because I asked that, too, and then it was kind of like, well, you know, it sort of depends on how high the levels were, and it depends on the currents within the lake. It depends on how it's coming in. One of the... That PDF that we talked about before, it talks about how E. coli could come in from stormwater outlets. There's a stormwater outlet right by Sandy Beach West. Is it coming from there? I don't know. It comes from Seagulls. It comes from seagulls and geese. It comes from people. It comes from, you know, all these different things. So why is it that Bartles is only getting, it gets a heavy load of people, right? But it's only had one close ever in five years. Is the water, the way it swirls there, different than over at Sandy Beach? So there is some variability there. The other thing that we would really, really like the city council to consider is to change your website. I know that's awfully difficult for a lot of people to manage their website, but right now on the website, you have predicting beach conditions. And then I encourage you to go there and try it. So you hit predicting beach conditions, and it's kind of weird, and then you have to dig down trying to find beach closures. And instead, you could replace that link with this PDF, which is the advisories, closures, and human health information. And in that PDF, what it has is, it talks about why does a beach get closed, what is E. coli, how does E. coli get into a lake? There's a clear link to beach closures, which is a one-click option, and then you'll see, you know, you can look up your specific beach. And then it gives some really common sense safety tips on what you should do when you bathe in a lake, and how that's different than using a pool. So we strongly recommend that you go ahead and do that, and we also think that maybe for Sandy Beach West, that you establish another procedure for a little bit more rapid E. coli testing, rather than waiting for the week. Yep.
Susan, I just have a question, it's a little bit of a tangent, but with the relocation of the boat launch, does that alter the sampling sites at Sandy Beach? Is there still an east and a west?
Yeah, there's still an east and a west. And then the other, the other thing, this is a little less, a little less important, but I, you know, as a, as a resident, I, this is important to me. It would be really great if the town and the city didn't think of city residents and town residents, but looked at swimmers in the lake. I mean, clearly, you could see city people deciding, hey, I want to go someplace quiet and private, I'm going to go to Ferry Park. And just as easy, you could see somebody from the town saying, I'm going to take my grandkids to Bartles and go to Doyle's Dogs, you know, they're coming in from out of town, let's go and have the, the traditional beach event. So we would like the two to work together and let the town go ahead and notify you when they're having troubles, you notify the town when you're having troubles, so that everybody knows when beaches are open and beaches are closed. And then the other idea was to go ahead and adopt the same signage that we had talked about before. Along the other idea is to continue to drive awareness. So right now, you have a city Facebook site, and it's kind of interesting, Eric was the one to tell me about that, this community seems to be big on Facebook, all right? And so people need to get comfortable to remember to go to your site for beach closures. So I was recommending putting together some sort of strategy, maybe next year, where you go on the Lake Mills community page, you know, maybe over Memorial Day, and you say, go here to know about beach closures, maybe do it for Fourth of July, and maybe do it for Labor Day, and you say, okay, three times, that's it, it's magic. Next year, you wouldn't do that, but you're just trying to drive awareness to get to your own site, and then from there on in, you'd be doing your site. I'm not saying constantly posting on Facebook. And the other idea would be for you to develop an email list of residents who are amenable to doing this. The town actually does this. You could use it for so many things. You could use it for election issues, you could use it for yard waste pickup, you can use it for road closures and things like that. So people would agree, you know, you think of some mechanism to collect it, and people would agree to it, and then you could send out an email blast to let people know that Sandy Beach is closed, or go to Sandy Beach East, or, or whatever. So little less critical, but yet still, I think, some good recommendations. So, and that's it.
This is Dan, if I may ask a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
I actually, that, a Facebook page that the city is operating, that is reporting such information? I had not heard of that.
Yeah, I hear him talking.
Oh, up on top, the screen.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dan, there you go.
Okay. I had, I wasn't aware of a city Facebook page that was reporting such information? You had made a comment that there was a city-managed Facebook page that was operating in some capacity with regard to this.
Yes, I did. Let me get you the name of it.
Steve, are you aware of such a page?
I'm pretty sure it's Dave's for the, for the cable TV.
It's cable, yeah, yeah. City and government Facebook page.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for the reverb.
We also have Mr. Schreiner, Director of Parks, here tonight, so if anyone has any further questions for Mr. Schreiner or Mr. Wilkie on this topic, go ahead. Lisa?
I guess I was just wondering generally if we could have Eric come up and just talk about your thoughts on these recommendations, which ones you think, you know, would be fairly straightforward to implement, or which ones would maybe need more discussion.
Well, Susan did a wonderful job presenting. That is exactly the process that we actually have as far as our testing within the city. The amount of time that it takes to report it versus when we actually get a positive result is about 24 hours, but it is almost instantaneous, at least for the most part. But the, the posting for, I think outreach to the actual community, I think the point of contact for the beaches itself with the signage is absolutely necessary if the beach is closed. Advisory levels, I'm not sure. I think it would absolutely be an option if there is signage that's going to be implemented for advisory levels. I absolutely agree that the town and city should use the same signs. Whether it's necessary or not, I'm not exactly sure. I still think there is an inherent risk as far as swimming in a natural body of water, and it's up to the actual beach course to determine if they want to do that or not. So I suppose it's not necessarily up to me to figure out if that's absolutely necessary to post advisory levels. I'm not opposed to it, but if it is decided that we should post advisory levels, I'm all for it.
Eric, are you familiar with, go ahead.
Are you familiar with the difference in the two tests that are being proposed? I know with us doing our own in-house testing, it's a lot quicker turnaround.
Slightly. I don't claim to be a wastewater expert or anything like that as far as collection. I did meet with Bill Kiesling, our wastewater treatment plant foreman, and he described a little bit as far as the actual testing. From what I understand, there is a difference between the testing protocols of E. coli versus fecal coliform. What hits positively and what doesn't within those two tests, I'm not exactly sure. I know we were talking about it previously, Lisa. That would be something absolutely a state hygiene question, for them at least. Now, I just know for sure fecal coliform can be tested in-house daily, E. coli cannot, that has to be state hygiene lab-specific testing. Now what constitutes as far as procedures and protocols for testing those two different things, I'm not exactly sure. I know, sorry, I know the incubation period for the fecal coliform is about a little over an hour, so that can be done in-house from the time of collection. By the time it goes to wastewater, it's about an hour for, for that result to actually come in. Now, E. coli, I'm not exactly sure with the state lab of hygiene, that's not a question that I'd be confident in answering.
You have other questions? Mr. Wilkie, any follow-up on that?
The process was originally always just fecal coliform, prior to 2016. At that time, it was a new recommendation to come out with E. coli. The city agreed, worked out a deal with the group to be able to send in a test once a week. Our guys actually pulled the test, pulled the water, they were trained. Then the, the county person comes in, grabs it, delivers it to the state hygiene lab, and they do the testing. As noted before, the town waits a long period of time. Of course, they don't have as busy a beaches as we do. We opted to, rather than pull another sample and run it in ourselves or wait till the next week, we opted to use the E. coli, the coliform, the fecal coliform, and that's what we've been using in that time period. So the debate usually focuses around the amount of time that it's going to take someone to run a sample into the state. And our guys generally don't mind pulling the samples, but the time it takes for them to be gone from their other duties to deliver a sample to Madison is generally quite a bit of time, especially if they're doing it three, four, or five days a week. So it was, that's what it ended up being as far as the city's position is, is that fecal coliform had been satisfactory for years. At this point in time, we continue to follow up on that and get our beaches open as quick as possible. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have any questions.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Eric, thank you, Susan, and thank you, Mr. Wilkie, for your follow-up there. So the, the next step here, this was a great educational format, good information. The next step would be if a council member wants to modify any of the rules to, to work with the staff and develop a, develop a, a recommendation, bring that to council.
Point of clarification on that, then. So would this need to be a, is this an ordinance level, kind of a protocol, or is this a policy that we would have just within the city set of policies?
Steve, can you answer that?
It's a policy.
All right, any other questions there? If you have follow-up?
I didn't have to speak around. Is it ordinance or policy?
He said policy. All right. Thanks again, Susan. All right. Moving forward, next on the agenda is a decision, discussion on the appeal of denial of petition received by Nikki Engler, requesting Class B user and sanctioned group status for use of the community center. So we had a lot of information in our packet for this information here. There was no formal appeal in our notes, so I believe it was a verbal appeal. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great, just want to make sure. And based on the information, tonight's vote would be based on our current policy, so we won't be rewriting the policy book on the community center tonight, but if it's deemed that we, we need to make revisions to that, that's something that we would do in the future. So I'm going to have City Attorney Dan Dressler speak to our judicial responsibility, and then we will have Nikki speak, and then Mr. Wilkie will speak. All right? The floor is yours, Dan.
Well, thank you very much, well-stated. You are acting in a, kind of an informal judiciary capacity here, and it's an appeal under a policy that has been adopted by the city council regarding the use of the community center and the city manager's decision on denying a request to be a Class B user sanctioned group. I, I believe this is a relatively informal appeal in that a majority vote would be the, enough to make a decision. I want to remind the council of, of just how much authority and control they have regarding use of the city's properties, specifically the community center in this circumstance. And if you have any questions during the proceeding here, just don't hesitate, I'll be online listening. So thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Engler, the floor is open for you.
Hi. So do you ask me questions, or do I just start chatting with you?
You can make a statement, and then we'll have Mr. Wilkie make a statement, then we'll open it up for questions.
Gotcha, perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. This is my first time doing a hearing like this, so we're just trying to do things best that we can. So we started this process a couple months ago in conversations with all of you, as you know, because I've emailed with all of you, and any one of us in this community could be up here right now. I just got to be the lucky one to do all the communicating this time around, so maybe sometime in the future, I'd be a different parent because this is a community group, so just wanted to say that. This is, okay, all right, now, we got that out of the way. I, we've noticed, and it's been really clear, that your city, or that the city policy for a Class B user includes two parameters, and it's very clear on the website. And it says that a Class B user includes groups that have a total membership of 50% or more city residents, and have been approved as a sanctioned group by the city manager. Class B users do not pay fees Monday through Thursday, although a deposit may be required. That's the full description of Class B users. So although it was never asked of me, I would like to show, demonstrate for you that our group does actually meet the 50% minimum requirement. We just quickly had most of our group, but not all of them, add their names and their addresses. And if you can see, I can give it to you guys, too, but we just printed one copy, but we have Lake Mills all the way down here, Ben Jefferson, Watertown, Lake Mills, Watertown, Lake Mills. Lake Mills.
So can you summarize that? Is that about 75%?
No, I would say that we're actually more than 75%.
Okay.
Is that what you said, 75? This, I wanted to pay. So just to demonstrate that, that, that is what our group is made of, based on your policy. The second part was to be approved by the city manager or a city council. So we were turned down by the city manager based on what he has done in the past, and so now I'm coming to you because your policy seems to be apparently a bit vague. We've, I have no clue about the precedent that was set before. We just came based on what we saw in the city policy, seeing that there is space here that's available with our city building, and seeing what the city policy just simply said, and we got quite excited when we saw that we actually do qualify, and our group, and what our group criteria, or our group is, meets the criteria that is set out in the city policy. So we had no clue about any precedent that was set because there's nothing else worded in the city policy about it. So that's, that's where we're coming from, and we, we are hoping that you can see that as well, and based on the current policy, that you would be able to utilize your responsibilities or rights or privileges as city council, whatever the correct terminology is for that, and then vote in favor of that overturning that previous decision. Is that good?
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Wilkie, Steve, do you have some comment for us on this?
Well, I provided the resolutions that, that provide the background on who's been approved and the sanction list, and if you go through all those, you'll note that throughout the course of the history, my interpretation of what a sanctioned organization would be would fall into those categories. There was one denial in that time period, which is probably more consistent with the group that's before us today. Dan has a little bit more history on that, if, if he wants to talk about that. But I, what we had noted, and, and I didn't write the policy, it was passed on to me by Vern Johnson, and pretty much managed by Jim Heilmann for most of the years that I, that I've been here. But it was clear that we looked at it as an organization had to have some sort of definition as being organized, so, you know, board, president, treasurer, some sort of background in, in organization, and that they had to be, the reason they were being sanctioned was because it was a public benefit. And so based on the history that I've had, and the look at the type of organization that was before me, I did not feel it met the history of what the policy had been organized under, and so I deny.
All right, thank you. Anything else? So let's open it up for questions and comments. Yeah, go ahead, come up to the mic.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is it possible for me to respond to anything that he said, or not yet? I just wanted to clarify, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Go ahead.
Just that, that, all of that stuff is well and good, but it was never put in the policy, so it's not in the policy. And also, too, if he was talking about the reason for that precedent being set, is for the benefit of the public good. I think that-
I think that all of this, all of the people coming here today can actually very simply demonstrate with their mere presence here, demonstrate what our group does as far as the concern of public benefit. We feel we're a public benefit.
I'll ask a question on, on that line then.
Okay.
Civic responsibility. Uh, one of the qualifications for the, uh, sanctioned group is that it has some type of civic responsibility. How would you address that question for this group?
I'm not aware of that question. Where is that? Or where is that part in the policy? Did I miss something?
I read that in the, in the notes of the that were prepared. That was something that was written in there somewhere, but.
My notes? I'm sorry. I just wanted to.
It was just the notes that, that we had for this meeting.
Okay. Were they my notes?
No, they would have been notes either from Mr. Wilkie or from Mr. Dressler. I'm not sure which one.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm not understanding what that has to do with the city policy. If you can just help me. I want to make sure that I'm, I'm explaining, understanding this properly.
This is Dan. If I may interrupt for just one moment?
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, I, I will, I, I'd like to read the, the policy statement. It's contained.
Dan, Dan, can you hold? Oh, go ahead.
Excuse me. I, I'd like to read the policy statement. That's included in the, uh, city, um, I want to give the, the right term for the actual document. Uh, the community center policies and procedures. The policy statement is one of the very first paragraphs, and it reads, "The Lake Mills Community Center is located in a building designed to provide facilities for governmental meetings, civic meetings, and social events. The following policies and regulations have been established to assure fair usage and mass, maximum enjoyment." Um, and as a policy statement, I think maybe that's where that, you know, civic purpose kind of derives from. Uh, I also think that Mr. Wilkie has expressly used that in his criteria for granting or denying, um, petitions for Class B user status um, in accord with his discretion within the policy. So as I wrote about that, that civic use, that's probably where those, that thought came from. Just to clarify there.
Thank you.
I also, could I speak right?
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't deny civic, the civic as being a reason to deny this. I mean, I, I didn't use that. I used the organization of structure. I felt that was the more important feature. I felt that, uh, that, uh, based on, particularly based on Mr. Engler's conversations before, that it would meet some level of civic uh, need, but I, I just didn't feel it met the organizational structure that we had historically used to define them. Um, as you know, prior, I did say that if they found some sort of organization to sponsor them, that I would, I would grant them the permit. And, uh, so that was, that was something that was, in my mind, was more important. I shouldn't say more important, but I thought there was enough of a civic group here that I didn't, that I wasn't denying on that. I was denying on the fact that the organization wasn't developed enough to allow them to have the use of the facility based on the history that we had used to define the policy. An administrative rule has long said that once there's a definition of what's going to be used, that's what's used, and you don't change it uh, unless there's something at the higher level to change it. So from our standpoint, using the resolutions that had been passed by the council, and then the history of the, the activity, uh, the type of organizational structure was very important, and that's what I denied on.
May I? I appreciate your consistency in that in the past, but I would also like to suggest that just because something hasn't done before, doesn't necessarily necessitate that it can. We're gonna dance over here with the volume. Um, maybe, um, uh, could not happen or take place moving forward. I, I, where, uh, Mr. Wilkie had written me that one of the last email, or one of the, one of the recent emails, in his words, it said, "You would be the first political group in the history of the policy to not have a board and be sanctioned." Even the political groups had organizing committees. The wording of the policy goes to intent, and this history proves intent. The original writer of the policy, Vern Johnson, provided direction to staff that I have carried forward to this day. He continues by saying, "I believe your options are to form some sort of organization, ask a sanctioned group to sponsor you, or ask the city to change the policy." So, some of the things that I don't think that makes much sense here, or maybe not make much sense, but that I take issue with, is that we would be the first non-political group in the history of policy to not have a board and be sanctioned. So where in the city policy does it state that to be a Class B user, we have to have a board and um, we have to have an organizing board, like he's saying, like the organizational structure? I don't see that. We, we have done, um, some scouring of city policies, trying to find more definition to it. When another mother here, Kristen Hein, was speaking with multiple people, um, no one here on city staff could find those definitions or give more information as to what actually is a group, like what's the definition of group, right? So we're just merely trying to, um, work within the existing city policy. And we feel that we, we do. Um, this other, this other language that keeps getting added in during some of this conversation seems like it's additional and beyond what the actual existing city policy is. So we feel like we're stumbling over that. Um. I hope that makes sense. Oh, and also it says too, when he adds by, "Your options are to form some sort of an organization." Hopefully we've established that we are an organization. We have regular meetings. We have, um, established group. We have established communication methods. Um, we all know each other. I mean, we, we have an organizational structure, which is informal, however it is ours. And we all use it, that organizational group structure. Um, so what, what kind of organizational structure is it that would meet the city policy that is existing? That would satisfy our group as being organized, um, according to that language here in this email? And then ask, um, another sanctioned, existing sanctioned group to sponsor us? Even that, I don't see in the city policy. Right? There's no language in the, in the existing policies that, that says, if you're not already Class B sanctioned, or sanctioned as a Class B user, you could go ahead and ask somebody else. So I feel that that may be as generous sense and Mr. Wilkie's you know, point of view to, to offer that to us. Um, we just feel though that we should be, as a standalone group, we should be able to be sanctioned as a Class B user, because we meet the city policy criteria.
Okay, I'll strike my civic question, based on the feedback that, that we received already. Is there other questions? Yes, Ms. Engler.
Uh, Mrs. Engler, I just have one clarifying question. Um, in your application, I think it says organization is co-op homeschool group, but several of the folks that, um, testified earlier were using the phrase fly community? Can you just clarify the difference? And is one of those like the official name, or if you could just clarify that?
Sure. Um, the group that we have is, is named Fly Homeschool Community. So if it was written as co-op, that's a, a common word that is used um, interchangeably oftentimes, so it doesn't necessarily make it different. It's just that that might have been a word that was used in place of community. It's, um, it's kind of mincing words, to be honest. So, uh, but our, how we write it is fly with capital letters, Homeschool Community.
Just to follow up then, so, um, so, and the reason I was asking is because the word co-op, uh, some people might think that's a formal, you know, organization of, in a cooperative format, but that's not what that term is intended to mean.
No, there are a lot of ways that you can do those things, but this is not how our, our formal structure is.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't quite capture the formal structure. What is the, the structure of the organization?
Um, it is regarding homeschooling. Um, you can have, be a part of a member, like an official member, like you could be a member of Sam's Club. For example, you could be an official member because you pay dues to something. Or you could go in there and you could just be a private customer. You could just be a retail customer and go and pay. It's something similar along those lines. Everyone is here based on their own will. Nobody pays any dues. We come, it is our community. That's, I guess what that is.
Okay, and I, I think I picked up that there's no, there's no board or, or formal organizational structure. Okay.
It's a bunch, a lot of teamwork.
Okay.
That goes into it.
So any questions, comment?
So Steve, you're looking for like an official charter with, uh, board member structure? Is that what you're actually looking for, for the organization?
Yes. That is historically what we've looked at when we've, uh, sanctioned users. Uh, if you start looking at it from any different forum than, than what then becomes a Class C or a Class D user? Um. You have two members who are, uh, from the city of Lake Mills, and they qualify as Class B users. Uh, there was a certain level of, of expectation that there would be groups that would pay, and there would be groups that qualified for a, a, um, Class B user, and that's what separated Bs and Cs. And in this case, we historically had used they're a civic organization, and they are organized with some level of a board.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm seeing in your application here, you just wanted it for a day. Is that just one day, or were you thinking of using it on a regular basis? And to then ask more questions, what other places have you looked into?
Thank you for your questions. Um, that, we were trying to just kind of officially get the ball rolling. So we, um, applied for one day of use. We would like to be able to come on a regular basis, which could be weekly or bi-weekly. Um. We would like to have a space to come to that is indoors. We have used indoors at people's homes. Um, we've used park spaces, park shelters. Um. We've had other events and gatherings in multiple different areas. Um, so.
I'm assuming as part of the curriculum where there's the socialization.
So, I know, it's hard to, um, homeschoolers have a lot of unique, um, opportunities. So none of us does anything the same way as another family. So that is part of homeschooling in Wisconsin. Each family has the parental authority over education for their own children. So we make our own decisions to come together as a community, and we do community, um, things, whether it's a project that, that certain students are working on, or a book club that they're coming into, or just game time. Um. So it's an opportunity to get like a larger group of people together, when sometimes someone's house just simply isn't big enough.
And the follow-up question I had was, what other locations have you considered?
I think I started with that, but, oh, considered. I'm sorry. No, you're right. It was considered. Um, we have, we had had some classes at a business office in Jefferson last year. Um, however, they have grown their business, so that is no longer available for the class that was held there. Uh, we have currently looked at a couple of different churches, and we are awaiting for some of those responses. But we would prefer to get this handled here.
Understandable. I was just looking for what other alternatives there are, because I know some churches have large facilities that they could provide.
Yes. And Rock Lake Activity Center is another one of those, but there's other things that, um, we have some needs that we can't meet at different areas, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just making sure my mic is on. Yes, Lisa?
Uh, I just was wondering if, um, there was a mention that there was a previous application for Class B that was denied, and I was wondering if Steve or Dan could talk about that situation, what the, what the situation was there?
Sure. Um, I, I honestly only found one, and it was, I, I believe I left the file on the dais in front of Greg Waters. Um, it's a, a request, and maybe Greg, you can clarify this, so I don't, I don't have a copy in front of me. But it was a request of a, uh, loosely formed group that had received some grant money, that definitely had a civic purpose. Uh, they were unclear, or, um, their statement was unclear with regard to the, the membership. And they, they sought sanctioning from Mr. Wilkie as a Class B group. He denied them, but in that circumstance, he did offer them, uh, use of the facility one time on a, on a free basis, I believe. Um, so that's, that's the one that I'm aware of with regard to a formal denial at this point.
The, the name of the organization was Jefferson County Disability Coalition? Just to give you a, a feel for it.
May I ask you all a question? What would the, um, detriment be to the city of Lake Mills? To see a large group of Lake Mills residents, who is clearly a group? Um, what would the detriment be to the city of Lake Mills or to the city council if you were to approve us as a Class B user?
I think that I'm wrestling with. Go ahead, Dan.
I'd, I'd like to make just one, one comment. Um. I, the, from my perspective as the attorney for the city, and I'm not trying to sell this in a way that is outside of what the policy actually states. I agree that the, the policy is ambiguous. Um, I think Steve's treatment of the policy through time has been consistent. Um, there is a lot of discretion that's afforded the city manager in that decision to sanction a group. Um. I, I think that the reason for an organizational structure is specifically insurance. Okay, that's the way I think about liability. It doesn't say that in the policy, but, uh, if you're, if, if an organization, organization has funds, has use of a facility, um, then typically there is some form of structure so that that entity can purchase insurance to cover a loss or indemnify someone that's allowing them space. I don't see that in the policy itself, but if, if Ms. Engler is going to ask about the potential detriment, I had to get that out there first. It's potential liability. It's potential loss for the city, and I'm not accusing or trying to say anything wrong with that statement, but, uh, that's what I think about liability. So I'd like to just make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, uh,
Go ahead.
Note that, that, uh, there's a long history of, that we've looked at as far as how to sanction, and if we're gonna change that, there's an equity and justice question, so that, that has to go before someone other than me.
So, so both of them are addressing where, where I was going with my, with my discussion. Uh, one of the things I'm looking at is just how, how does the policy currently state it? How do you fit into that? Um, where do we draw the line? Uh, if we open the door here, are we opening the door to the Bridge Club, to the Book Club, to the Thursday Night Football Club? You know, where is that line being drawn? So maybe the policy does need to be cleaned up, and maybe that's something we need to look at, but, uh, tonight I think we need to vote on the current policy that, um, that you're in an appeal process on a denial, and does it make sense to overturn that appeal or not? So.
I would like to follow up with my question. Um, when I had asked, what would be the detriment? What would be the benefit? Um, there is a potential huge benefit for the city of Lake Mills to be able to provide a space to a group that is the large size that our group is. Um, we are not simply a bridge club. Um, but we are a large group of people who live in this community. We are active community members. We are engaged in a lot of different things. We all pay our property taxes, and we are, we love living here. So we would not be, um, we would be grateful, but we also would be a shining example of Lake Mills community. So there is also, um, if you're looking at like the potential downside of insurance, I'm sure you could have those problems with, with anything. If that is something that you want us to be able to consider something moving forward, um, that's something that's never been brought up until just now, apparently when I asked that question. Um, but that was never in any of the, um, email exchanges from any of you, or with Steve, or Mr. Wilkie, I'm sorry, or Mr. Dresser, um, in any of this conversation. Never once was the issue of having insurance for our group ever brought up.
Uh, point of clarification.
That Lake Mills could provide a great benefit to part of its community.
Nikki, I believe in our. Nikki, I believe in our conversation that I explicitly did bring up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I may not have stated that it was any kind of requirement, but I believe in our conversation on the phone that I did bring up insurance. I recall it specifically.
I don't, but that's okay.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
I just want to go back to the policy. For one, there's no mention in the policy of a requirement for insurance. The policy specifically says, policy statement, it's for social events is one of the permitted things in the policy. Use is generally permitted, meetings, parties, receptions, dances, social and cultural activities. Entities putting on those events probably don't have insurance. Further, Part Four, Youth Eligibility Designations, the Lake Mills Community Center is made available to organizations and private individuals. It's unlikely that private individuals would have insurance. And so, I don't think that that's a basis really to consider in terms of the appeal here today. Sure, I was trying to speak loudly too, but did everybody hear some of that? I can reiterate some of it if I need to. But generally, I saw, sort of from Michelle, what I'm getting at is that some of the permitted uses and conceptualized ideas for what the community center would be for don't require that insurance. Further, sanctioned users that are Class B users could also be required to place a deposit. And in a lot of instances, deposits are a sort of insurance, right? And so, even if the group is considered a Class B user today after this meeting, they would still be subject to the rest of the policy. And so, that doesn't negate that and I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions, comments?
Steve, in your email, you claim, you stated that they could get sponsorship from, is that would be another Class B organization? What were you looking for as far as sponsorship to support them to become a Class B?
You ready? The, historically for things like this, I've seen churches step up the chamber. Even Rotary has sponsored some other groups. So, that's generally what I was thinking about when I thought about it was typically a, a homeschooling group has a church, has a lot of church connections. And so, I figured one of the members could get a church to sponsor them.
And I do remember that. One of the things that we would like to be clear on, we are a standalone community. We are not of one church and homeschoolers do not need to fall into that category. We are a group of independent families who independently by law homeschool our families legally. We have chosen by our own choice to come together as a community for all sorts of enrichment and other options and opportunities as a community. We would simply like to be recognized that we are a group. We are, major, majority of us are Lake Mills residents. And so, with the existing city policy, we would just like that to be viewed as simply as that policy is written and be able to be sanctioned as a Class B user. But, I, it would be dishonest of me to say, okay, yeah, I used to attend church over here. Maybe I can go over there and pull some strings and ask somebody to do that. And I'm sure I could do that, but it never dawned on me for a second to do that because it simply would be dishonest. We do not have an umbrella group. We are honestly individual families. So, I want to make that clear to you. We are coming to you very honestly as individual families that have come together as a community.
I have a question.
Yes?
Okay, hold on, I just had a, I just had a Mr. Waters moment. Because I can't remember what I was going to ask. I apologize, it'll come back to me.
Mrs. Bishop?
I just want to make a comment about the organization of the group and I think Mr. Fields had a point. There's no degree of formality required in the policy for how the organization is developed or carried out. And so, again, as long as they meet the criteria in the policy that they consist of more than 50% of Lake Mills users, which I think Ms. Engler has said they do more than 75%, that's the criteria that we should be looking at here today.
I remembered it. But, Steve, what is the cost that is associated with the use of this facility for a non-Class B user?
I don't remember right off the top of my head, but I think it's $50 per use.
Yes, it is.
And let me just make sure, I understand Nikki, you're saying that your group does not pay fees into a, into a, a mass area that in fact your purpose is just to get together to have these opportunities to socialize and, I understand it correctly?
Correct. We have no common funds or dues or bank accounts or anything like that. Anything that we do when we go, like if we go roller skating or something or bowling, each family pays for their own kids when they get there.
So, with FLY, is that something that was originated with your family and that everybody just kind of started to get together? Or is it more like, I mean, how did you, how did you come to be a group? Is what I'm trying to find out.
A lot of us homeschooled individually all throughout last year. A lot of these people have been homeschooling their entire parenthood existence. We, over the course of the last couple of years, have befriended one another and have realized how much it would be a benefit to our families to get together more often. And so, a lot of us decided like, hey, we're not the only ones out there that want to get together. So, let's just make it official and call ourselves something. So, we did have a few meetings with, we had picnics, we had community picnics because that's how we do life is as families. And so, we had the idea to go ahead and move forward with just a group. And so, we organized after already meeting together, doing different things just because that's what families do. We, this summer, we established a name for ourselves and we organized a Facebook group and an email list to communicate because everybody in the world is on Facebook. And so, we have a lot of our, well, not a lot, but there are several members who are participants, who we kind of communicate with via email only and not through the Facebook group. But, we call ourselves FLY because it's, having a name is a unifying factor. So, our kids all say, you know, are we getting together with FLY today? Or, you know, it's, it's a wonderful thing. So, no, it was not my family. It was all sorts of families that instead of feeling separated, wanted to have some time and to get together.
So, I just want to follow up with that because I think a lot of groups in their infancy do exactly what you just said. They, they form a common use. They have, they, they come together, they're working together, they come with an understanding. Eventually, I would think if you got big enough, you could probably have a board. And maybe now knowing that you, that that's something worth thinking about, it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be a judicial-like situation. But, for the sake of organization, because the kinds of things I'm seeing that were approved prior are things like Boy Scouts of America. We all know the Boy Scouts have, have a board, the Girl Scouts have a board. They're way, way, way up there. But, since you guys are so local, I think, you know, it would be advisable to have some organization. And I'm not saying that that's going to make or break my decision in this. It's just, it's a future thought for when you want to go on further with this. Because I don't foresee, or I, I foresee that you're going to continue to do this no matter how old your children are. I have this feeling that this, this will continue. So, if it continues and the founding members of FLY want to continue to make it happen, then I suggest a board would be a really good way to make that kind of thing happen.
I appreciate that. And there are actual co-ops that do have official structure and organization to that. And that is something that this group has decided that we did not want to actually participate in. So, those structures do exist and so, you're, you're right on that. Those, there are a lot of parents and families that find great benefit in, in being a part of something that's more formal like that. And then, yes, then they do actually pay fees to be a part of those things. That's not our organization's style though. Maybe in the future it may be. However, in our foreseeable future, it is not on our, it's not what we're looking at. I'm missing my word right there.
I understood what you meant. It's still brand new and...
Well, yeah, but our group is brand new, however homeschooling for us is not new for a lot of families, you know what I mean? So, I know it's really very different from when a lot of people are used to like the public school element. That's just something that's normal for everybody. This is definitely a break from like that normal, but each family is doing their own thing.
Okay.
Steve and Dan, can I get a clarification on the 50% rule? I am, the way I read it is the 50% rule applies to sanctioned B groups. So, for instance, if the Boy Scouts of America was a Lake Mills group, they would meet the 50% rule. But, if the Boy Scouts, a sanctioned B group, was a Jefferson group, they would not meet the 50% rule, so they would not meet the standard. Is, am I applying that correctly?
That's the way we would have read it.
So, the, the policy actually says Class B users includes groups that have a total membership of 50% or more residents and have been approved as a sanctioned group. That's 50% or more city residents is what the, the definition entails.
So, any organization that's 50%, like the Bridge Group, that's 50% Lake Mills would qualify as a Group B according to that?
Well, that's why I stated the policy statement at the outset. And that, I think, it at least attempts to speak out intent. With regard to interpretation of such documents, I always start with the plain language. But, then at some point, we do have to derive intent. I believe the policy statement gives us as good of a look into what that is as we're afforded in this document and that states, "The Lake Mills Community Center is located in a building designed to provide facilities for governmental meetings, civic meetings, and social events. The following policies and regulations have been established to assure fair usage and maximum enjoyment." And then, we go on to the Class B user definition, which states, "A minimum of 50% city residents."
But, I guess the way I read it is it would be a sanctioned B group that had 50% Lake Mills residents. I guess is the way I read into it. Did you have something there, Mrs. Bishop?
I do, I can see how it would be read that way and I think that's an argument to be made. However, the way I read it is Class B users includes this list, groups that are 50% or more consisting of Lake Mills residents. The list continues to only the second item and sanctioned Class B users. You could read that sanctioned Class B users or sanctioned users by the city manager also have to be 50% or more and maybe that's where we should get to. But, I don't know, since you could read it either way, I don't know that the policy is written specifically says that.
We have historically only sanctioned...
Go ahead, sorry.
We have historically only sanctioned groups that were 50% or more, Lake Mills.
Have we? The Rock River Coalition can't possibly be more than 50% Lake Mills since it consists of multiple counties. And to boot, the Rock River Coalition is actually registered in Jefferson, the city, Wisconsin. It's not even registered in Lake Mills. That's just one example and, you know, it's already a sanctioned user. But, I have an additional note about the sanctioned users, but I will let the council president direct if there's anybody who has a comment first.
Steve, have we had any other organizations that have similar circumstances that needed sponsorship? Or how have we treated other people with issues like this?
We've had a seek sponsors. Most of them have found sponsors.
Could you kind of share some, like, were they under, is it similar circumstances that they needed sponsorship where they didn't have the structure or kind of give us some background?
Yes, that would be the case. They, they didn't have the structure. Historically, from where I was sitting, the, the group had to be 50%. But, if they didn't have the organization, then we allow a, a sponsor to step up.
Steve, with regard to the sponsorship, what difference does it make?
When you're looking at a group and you're trying to define who is going to qualify and who's not, and you say, well, the group is 50% Lake Mills, just about everybody becomes a sanctioned group.
Hold on. Go ahead.
Just about everybody becomes a sanctioned group.
Apparently, I'm hot. Everybody else is red, Dan. Dave?
Go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Steve.
I'm trying to remember what I was talking about.
What difference would it make, having a sponsor or not?
Allowing them to grab a sponsor allowed me not to have to make a decision on what a group was because if you make every, if you consider 50% or more the sole reason for having it, everybody qualifies. Any husband or wife? Just about any, there's no need to worry about having a, a definition of being sanctioned or not. Everybody qualifies, so.
Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
Then I think we should talk about some of the other Class B sanctioned users that have qualified. The Coalition Against Bigger Class Sizes, Lake Mills Women's Club, Tyranina Ladies Club. For instance, these organizations, I, I'm not on mute, just checking. These organizations are not registered as incorporated with the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions. So, they are not a non-stock corporation, they're not an LLC, they're not an S corp. These organizations also have not been registered, for instance, with the IRS as a charitable organization, yet they have been granted previously Class B user status. So, I mean, it seems like the city manager is trying to apply a policy where there have been exceptions granted previously. And he's applying a policy that is certainly not written within the City of Lake Mills policies and procedures that was previously passed. So, I, again, I don't understand this reliance on the formality of the organization of the group.
I guess first of all, I'd like to say thank you, Mrs. Engler, for bringing this issue to our attention. And I know you've been corresponding with all of us and, and working on this for a number of months. So, I, I just really appreciate your effort to try to understand the policy and go through this process. I think we're all expressing in different ways that this policy leaves a little bit to be desired. There's definitely some things that could be a lot clearer, more straightforward in it. It's over 20 years old, I don't think it's been updated for all that time. So, like, I don't even think the senior center uses the building anymore, but there's references to that. So, you know, obviously, it, it could definitely use some work. I love the fact that all these families are here and you have kids coming and testifying. I mean, what a great civic learning experience for them. So, I've been really kind of struggling to think about how to approach this and, and I appreciate the additional information that you brought to to help us understand what your group is about. I've been trying to look at this, look at the different factors that I think that we have to consider. And, you know, we've got a responsibility to make the best decision for the entire community, of which many of you are members and those who aren't here. So, we've got to make the best decision for all of them. I guess I'm, the, some of the things I've been thinking about, it's very confusing and unclear for an applicant to know how to qualify as a sanctioned organization. So, I think that's definitely a factor to take into consideration. So I think that's definitely a factor to take into consideration. On the flip side of that, I'm very concerned about the fairness because I know of groups that have a group of people with a common interest that live in the community, that have wanted to gather, and they've, you know, viewed themselves as fitting in C or D and paid those fees. So this, I feel, would be a different, you know, different decision than maybe it's been made in the past. So then isn't that unfair to these other groups that paid fees? One of the things that really stuck in my mind in reading the, our attorney's memo, and I think he's right, is to the, despite the fact that this policy is very vague and unclear, it does give very clear discretion to the city manager to make these decisions. And I don't, I think, you know, Catherine, you've raised one or two groups where maybe we could ask the question, okay, how did they get on the list? But in general, I'm not really seeing any evidence that this policy has, that the city manager hasn't been doing this consistently or that this group has been being treated differently than other groups. And so that's where I'm really kind of struggling to think about what's fair. I think if we grant this group Class B, then there's unfairness to other groups who might have tried to make the same case and just maybe didn't, you know, come before previous councils. So I guess honestly where I'm at, I do have a motion that I would like to make if people feel that they've had a chance to, you know, express their perspectives. And I did type up versions for folks. I guess my motion is that we would uphold the city manager's denial of the request for Class B status from, and I'll change it, I guess it's Fly Homeschool Community is the name of the group, that we would authorize a one-time fee waiver for Fly Homeschool Community, so that they can use the community center for one event in 2021, and that we put the community center policies and procedures on our next agenda for discussion of possible revisions because it really does need, I think it needs some work. So I will send this to the staff that are online, but I've passed out a copy of that motion to everyone.
I'm torn here because we have a motion on the floor, but we're actually reviewing a. Where's my notes? An appeal of the denial petition. So you're suggesting that we use this motion in replace of the appeal?
Well, maybe our attorney can let me know if this is appropriate approach, but I figure we need to vote on something. So my motion, the first item, is that we uphold the denial of the city manager. So we're turning down the, turning down the appeal. That's my proposal.
So Mr. Drescher, can I have some assistance from a part of entry procedure on this?
With regard to the process, I think a motion could potentially close this issue so long as we get to a vote, and then that vote would determine the action.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Going once?
Am I allowed to amend the motion?
Not, not without, not in this circumstance. The speaker could amend that motion. Right, the speaker could amend that motion before it's seconded, but you would need a second to amend it.
So if I amend, or if I second this, you're saying that then I would be allowed to amend it?
You could motion to amend it then, yes. Otherwise, at this point, it would just die on the vine if there's no second.
Correct. Going twice?
Okay, I'm going to second it, and I would, I'm moving to amend it.
So there's a motion by Mrs. Curler, a second by Ms. Quidnow. She's making an amendment at this point? You're making a motion for an amendment?
I would like to strike. I'd like to strike number one, only that for the rest of 2021, that, that the Fly Homeschool Group would not be permitted, but then in 2022 would be considered a Class B.
A point of privilege.
Yes.
To ask a question. I understood Ms. Curler as just making the motion to uphold the city manager's denial of the request for Class B status, and then I assumed you'd do a motion later for two and three. And what I hear when I'm doing is striking number one, which I thought was the motion on the table.
I apologize. Is that what was going? That was probably my misunderstanding as well. Because there's three things on this motion, and there's like three subsections. So is there, is the motion that I'm seconding only for number one? Is that what you're seeking clarification on?
That was my understanding as to what Ms. Curler's motion was that you were seconding, yes.
Okay. My mistake, simply because I was confused by the way that this was set up. I assume that this was all one motion, not three separate motions. I'm not sure.
No, I take it as one motion.
Okay, so then that's.
That's my intention. Oh, my intention is it's one motion because I think the pieces work together.
But I misunderstood. Thank you.
So you're asking to modify the first part of this motion?
Yes, I would like to modify it so that the denial of the request for Class B is for the continuation of 2021, but that is 2022, they are considered Class B.
So, do I have to agree with that amendment?
That amendment would go to a vote, but I want to make sure that we're clear on what the amendment is, and at this point, I'm not.
Mr. Drescher, my amendment is such that the denial is only until 2021 is over.
Yeah, that, I, I want to, I don't want to go too far with regard to what the council's role here is. And I don't, I'm not questioning the council's authority to make such a decision. However, I'd like to keep in scope what's actually in front of you tonight, and that is an appeal of the city manager's denial of granting Class B sanctioned user status. Deciding it one way now and changing it at some future date, that's a little bit novel to me in this circumstance. I'm not sure that it doesn't necessarily work. I just want to be very clear on, on what, what actually is stated.
Okay, let me ponder on this for a second because I want to absorb everything that you just said. What I'm hearing you say is that the, the point of the motion is to uphold the denial in general, like forever, that's the way it will be until we change the policy to reflect the kinds of things that need to be addressed, which then would allow for the Fly Homeschool to reapply and possibly get permitted?
Well, I didn't say any of that.
Okay, I'm.
The agenda item is discussion decision on appeal of denial of petition received by Nikki Engler requesting Class B user and sanctioned group status for use of the community center. I would advise to stay within that context as much as possible. You've discussed as a group amending this policy in the future, and regardless of your decision this evening, with an amended policy, there would be certainly an opportunity to reapply if the denial stands or to maintain their Class B user status if the policy is amended at some point in the future. That, that motion, that amendment is, I'm not exactly sure where you're going with it, to be quite frank.
So then, do I have permission to strike my amendment?
There has been no second at this point. Right now, what we're getting into is, you know, clarification on what that amendment is, so you can certainly pull it back at any point.
Okay. My other concern, nope, actually, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
So you're striking your amendment?
Yes. Yes, I'm striking my amendment. Please understand that that's not necessarily reflective of my vote.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Is there any questions, comments on this motion? All right. CNN, we're going to go to a roll call vote. This roll call vote will override the the appeal that's on, that's on the agenda. So the motion, I missed Curler, uphold, number one, to uphold the city manager's denial, the request for Class B status from Fly Co-op Homeschool Group. Number two, authorize a one-time fee waiver for the Fly Co-op Homeschool Group to use the community center for one event in 2021. And number three, punt the community center policy and procedures on the next city council agenda for discussion on possible revisions. We have a roll call for this motion.
Mr. Waters?
Nay.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you. So the motion fails. We're back to the item on the agenda, which is, which is the discussion decision on appeal of denial of petition received by Nikki Engler requesting Class B user and sanctioned group status for the use of the community center. Any further questions or comments? Mrs. Bishop?
I move to approve Fly Homeschool Community as a Class B user per the current Lake Mills policy.
I'll second. So motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields, to approve Fly School Community as a Class, Class B sanctioned user? Any questions, discussion? Go ahead.
I'd just like to thank everybody who came down here before we vote. This is probably one of the largest groups I've seen in being on a council for several years, and it's great to see the students down here. So hopefully, they can continue their education in some of the stuff that sometimes it's a cumbersome place to be, but it does get the job done, hopefully. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Motion passed three to two.
All right. So thank you again for, for coming tonight. And you are approved as a sanctioned B user. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item C is the discussion decision on the Humane Society contract. City Council motion 21-11-1-1. Misty, can you read that?
City Council motion 21-11-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County.
I move to adopt motion 21-11-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Humane Society.
I'll second. Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Discussion, or excuse me, any, any background on that from the staff? Mr. Wilkie?
The city is required to have a contract like this or at least provide this type of service. We've contracted with the Humane Society of Jefferson County for at least 25 years, and we recommend the contract again.
Any questions, comment? CNN, roll call.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution 21-63, authorizing the 911 Joint Powers Agreement with Jefferson County Emergency Services. Is there a motion for Resolution 2163?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-63, authorizing the 911 Joint Powers Agreement between the Jefferson County Emergency Services.
Thank you for correcting me. I think I said that wrong. 2163, is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Bishop. Can we have some background lists from city staff?
When the city joined Jefferson County in the 911 as part of the statutory agreement for use of certain types of funds, we agreed to approve this resolution annually. And it basically agrees to cooperate countywide with our police and fire.
All right, any questions or comments on, on this topic? CNN, let's have a roll call on Resolution 21-63.
So the roll call for Resolution 21-63, Joint Powers Agreement, County 911 Emergency System. Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you, Misty, and thank you for reading that. All right, Resolution 21-64, Reed Street Condominium 2 Platt, 961/963 Reed Street. Can you read that resolution?
City of Lake Mills Resolution 21-64, Condominium Platt Approval, Reed Street Condominium, Condominium 2.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 21-64, Condominium Platt Approval for Reed Street Condominium 2.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there some background from staff on this?
Property was originally constructed as a duplex, and the owner is looking to move to a condominium plant in order to be able to sell each unit as an owner-occupied condo. Went through planning commission and was approved, and so staff recommends approval.
So planning commission reviewed and approved, Planning Commission motion 21-10-1, Reed Street.
Mr. President, I noticed that Mr. Slade is on the line, so I would make a motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak if he's interested.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'll second. Are those in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Mr. Shade, thank you for hanging with us. It's a long night tonight. Appreciate it. Do you have any comment for us tonight?
Not unless you have a specific question.
All right. We can open it up to questions and comments, and why don't you hang on and see if there's anything that you can help us out with here, okay?
Certainly.
All right. It's open for questions and comments.
I think we reviewed, just a comment, I guess I think we reviewed a similar proposal, sorry for mispronouncing your name, Mr. Shade, a couple of months ago for a neighboring property. So is it, it's a similar proposal?
Yes, identical, except the address is different.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. CNN, let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 21-64.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shade. All right. We are now moving into a public hearing for the 2022 General Fund Budget. There's nobody in the gallery for a public hearing. Is there anybody online for public hearing? I can't tell, so I'll open the floor. So we are now in public hearing for the 2022 General Fund Budget. The floor is open. Going once, twice, and a third time. The public hearing is closed for the 2022 General Fund Budget. All right. So we'll move to the ordinance. This will be the third reading for ordinance 1228A, which is the 2022 General Fund Budget. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1228A, 2022 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
All right. So that was the third reading. I'll now entertain a motion for approval of the General Fund Budget.
I'll make an motion to approve ordinance 1228A, the 2022 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
I'll second. Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Floor is open for questions or, and/or discussion regarding the General Fund Budget. Any questions or discussion, or any background, I guess, from, from the staff? I guess we've been background on this a lot for the last two months, but go ahead.
I don't have anything to add. All the changes that we discussed at the last study session were made.
All right. Any further questions or comment? CNN, can we have a roll call on ordinance 1228A, 2022 General Fund Budget?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. All right. We are now open for public hearing on the 2022 Capitol Budget. See nobody in the gallery. I will open up the, open up for comment for anybody online. So we are now in public hearing for the 2022 Capitol Budget. Any comments? Going once, going twice, and the third time, I have now, I am closing the public hearing for the 2022 Capitol Budget. So now we move to ordinance 1228A, the 2022 Capitol Budget, third reading. Misty, can you read the?
Point of information, Mr. President, I think you gave the wrong ordinance number.
Ordinance 1229A, thank you. 2022. I'm thinking I have some dyslexia going on tonight. That's probably the third time I've done that, but ordinance 1229A, 2022 Capitol Budget, third reading. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1229A, 2022 Capitol Budget.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for the 2022 Capitol Budget.
I'll move to approve ordinance 21, or 1229A, Capitol Budget.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnow. All right. Any, any background from city staff? Mr. Wilkie?
Property taxes dropped from $40,000 down to $3,000. The fund balance applied was zero, is now 961.7. The amount of money borrowed dropped to $1,511,000. The total amount went up $95,000 because of the fire PPE that was added, but other than that, absolutely consistent with what we discussed at the study session.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I'd just like to make a comment. I want to thank the staff for working with us through the last several budget sessions, and particularly identifying ways that we could reduce the proposed borrowing. I think, in part, the good management of the finances put us in a position to be able to apply some of that fund. So I just appreciate everyone's efforts on that.
Thank you. Well stated. Any other comments or questions?
I was going to say, I second that, but it's not a motion, so I agree.
Any other questions or comments? All right. CNN, let's move to a roll call on ordinance 1229A.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. That wraps up council business. Let's move on to recommendations for future agendas. I'd like to point out that, that we have no meeting on the first week of January, so that meeting will be removed from the calendar. I think it's on the second or the third of January, and that would pose a lot of staff issues as far as preparing information for that. Also, that's coming from the, the week after Christmas where a lot of people take holidays, so it doesn't make sense to have a meeting there, but we will have a meeting on the third week of January. Any other recommendations for future agenda?
I do recommend putting the community center policies and procedures on the next city council agenda for discussion and revision. Not possible revision. I believe revision is necessary.
All right. Anything else? Anything from staff? Hearing none. I'll move on to adjournment of this meeting. Thank you for everybody's time of long meeting, but got a lot covered. And thank you. We stand adjourned.